Left from one meeting to another and didn't even leave my chair. Amazing.
My internet keeps cutting in and out. I don't know why.
Okay, we'll see. A couple, let me give me a couple administrative things here.
Diane.
Hello.
Hi Diane.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
All right, well, our, our previous work session ran just a couple minutes later, so we're, we're joining just a little bit late. It looks like all the trustees are on except for Mr. Wagner. Ryan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll, we'll kick off, call the meeting to order tonight, December 7th, Village Council Regular Session Meeting. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I think Mr. Mallory's getting quick on that flag.
Yeah. We hope this is, we have a different flag showed up today.
That's good.
Angel is good. All right, here we go.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Different flag, same results. Gather our thoughts and thank you to the others that aren't so fortunate tonight. And then when Jim has a moment, if you take roll call, please.
Let me, uh.
Oh.
Trying to, okay, roll call. Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here. Thank you very much, um.
Yeah, I'll jump back, I'll get you.
We have the agenda in front of us. We have the, it was had a chance to review. Open up to a motion.
Trustee Keller so moved.
Trustee Keller making a motion on the agenda.
Support.
Trustee Wagner's.
I had trustee Wagner with the support.
Let the new guy get in there.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, the roll call vote on approval of the agenda tonight. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. President Frisbee.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Agenda passes.
Agenda passes, thank you. I see we have nothing on the scheduled appearances, but I see Mr. Geisler on the phone. Is there, if he'd like to, has anything he'd like to bring to the table, John?
Uh, you know, politicians always have something to say. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, can you hear me now? I, I want to apologize to all of you because I missed your last meeting. I was sitting in with Schoolcraft Village at that time. And I really regret not only being absent when new members joined your board, but also when Bill Adams hung it up and, and went off into the sunset. Bill and I go back over forty years. And he's, he's a guy I've always considered a good friend. I think he's been wonderful for Vicksburg. And I would have loved to have been part of the, the honoring of him, and I didn't do that. So that's, that's my one thing to report now is I'm embarrassed. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I, I think we all have the same impression of, and I'm surprised he's not on tonight. Well, I guess I'm he hung it up literally. So the next on the agenda is citizens comments or agenda items. I see there's others on the call tonight. If you have something you'd like to speak to in regards to the agenda, please raise your hand if you can, or if not unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
And, uh. Jackie raised her hand.
Hi, is it okay for me to speak now?
Thank you. Yes, Jackie.
Okay, I just, I saw that the Christmas in the village was on the agenda, maybe under the manager's report or something. I just wanted to say that I'm just so happy that there was a committee that put together the Christmas in the village. I think the downtown looks better than ever. And the Christmas card lane is awesome. And I just, I'm just so happy that what an effort and it was awesome. So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee, to Alex and John DeBolt and Natasha. And yeah, it's cool. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that acknowledgement. That is, it is, maybe we can have the parade and the card in the historic village next year too. That'd be kind of cool. Was there anyone else, Mr. Mallory? Showed indication they wanted to speak?
Uh, no one else, sir.
What's that, number nine, approval of the general consent agenda? So everybody had a chance to look that over. That was the largest check I ever signed in my life. I'll take a, anybody has a motion to make on it?
Trustee Wagner, I move, we approve the general consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Wagner.
Trustee Holmes second.
Sounds like Rick Holmes seconds.
Yes.
So we have approval of the consent agenda.
Well, go ahead and take a roll call vote with Mr. Wagner on the motion and Mr. Holmes seconding it. This is an approval for the general consent agenda. Uh, trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to number ten, the village council action items. We have the approval of purchase for the Tri-Max Rough Mower Angels Crossings for thirty thousand five hundred dollars with Mr. Hamm spoke to briefly. Um, I don't know, Jim, do you wanted to speak to that more or is that something?
No, I think the key points are a updated rough mower that Renaissance Group has seen a thirty percent reduction in maintenance, payroll cost and, and that what the approval that staff is recommending tonight is approval to purchase an updated rough mower not to exceed the thirty thousand five hundred dollar cost point. Tom is going to research it to make sure that um, he believes that is below market value. Um, and that's a price they're comfortable selling, but he wanted to make sure other options weren't out there that might be less and do the same job. So I'm just dropping the, the Tri-Mac Snake brand name, but the investment would go to an upgraded rough mower, which would be in addition to the two thousand thirteen or fourteen, one that we currently have out there. So, and staff is recommending uh, this investment be made and be happy to answer any questions.
And the money comes from where, Jim?
It's the golf course fund, the revenue that the golf course has and we're, we're comfortable with that expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
And most everyone on this call tonight has made significant investment in the golf course when it comes to oversight and management and fiscal responsibility. I never thought we'd be in this position. We've taken a lot of risk. Put a lot of money into that golf course, uh, put a lot of trust in, uh, Tom Hamm's organization and it literally appears that it's paying off for. So I'm, I'm very confident in what they asked for. It's they've never come down and asked it for anything that was, you know, really relevant to what they're trying to do. So I'm confident in it. Would be open to a motion to approve the purchase of the Tri-Mac's rough cut mower.
I move that we purchase a rough cut mower for Angels Crossing.
Trustee Keller's support.
Not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred dollars.
So I've recorded trustee Reaster making the motion for a purchase of a, a upgraded rough mower for Angels not to exceed thirty thousand five hundred dollars supported by trustee Keller. And if there were comments or questions?
My comment would be after watching the video on this thing, this is a low maintenance piece of equipment. Basically, it's a Sherman tank for mowing lawns, mowing the golf course. And I'm very much impressed with the video that I saw. So I think it's a good investment.
Thanks, thanks for that, Danny.
Is there any other comments or questions? And then I'll take a roll call. Hearing none or seeing no hands raised, uh. Trustee Olson.
Very much yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you all for that. Um, we have in front of us also the social district applications. You know, we went to the, the state and applied for it and the we as an organization applied for. And now they have to apply for it to the state. And they've written their applications and I guess we have to approve those, Mr. Mallory?
That's correct. Uh, the council or the governing body has to approve them before they're forwarded to the state. All of the establishments worked with the village attorney Andrew Horn in preparing the documents. I would add that the December twenty first council agenda will include the applications for Jaspers and the distant whistle. So all five uh, establishments have elected to participate in this program. But this has been reviewed by our village attorney, the paperwork in front of you, and the recommendation is for approval. And then after the twenty first, all five will be submitted together to the state of Michigan.
But for tonight, we're just doing this, the first three.
Correct. Yeah, so those are the, the three that had the paperwork completed and able to be reviewed by Andrew Horn.
Jim, trustee Keller, do we, do we need to do these individually or can we do them, do them in total?
We, we can do them in total. There's not a financial, anything to do with finances on them.
We'll open for a motion if anyone so inclined.
Trustee Keller, I move that we approve the applications for the following establishments for the social district, village hideaway, village Main Street Pub and Dickers Tavern. Uh, to be submitted later at the end of the month.
Do we have support?
Trustee Wagner's support.
Very well stated, Mr. Keller.
Yes, Mr. Keller making a well-defined motion and Mr. Wagner supporting the roll call vote. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Um, yes.
Hey Jim, how soon, once they send these to the state, how soon will they be told, hey, you're good to go? You know, you can, you can start with your social district guidelines.
We, we, we anticipate between ten and twenty-one days. Um, parallel in this, Alex is finalizing the beverage cup use and we would uh, be working out additional trash receptacles and that to meet it. But on the best case scenario, I would see the village being in a position at the very earliest, the month of February, opening it, but we'll evaluate it as well. Uh, with the current situation we're all living in.
Very good. Moving on to item eleven, village manager report. You have an update on the sewer issue and repair?
Yeah, I, I, I did forget one point talking about social districts that, um, we, I have sent a request to Andrew Horn to, uh, research the feasibility, while really the legality and staff will look at the feasibility of making the social district when it is being utilized smoke-free. Um, and we would report back to the council on the pros and cons of that standalone uh, topic and had, and get council input at, at, at that time. So just to let you know, that's something that's come up since the approval of the social district that we are, are looking into. Um, any, on the, uh, village managers report, first and foremost, it's, it's not on the agenda, um, but I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to introduce uh, Diane Gilligan who's on our call. She's our newest member of our team here at the village and we're real happy uh, that she's a part, um, couple days into this accounts payable and, uh, Mr. Frisbee alluded to it earlier. It's one of the largest warrant reports uh, that, that, I think it is the largest one in the four, coming up on five years now that I've been with the village. Um, she handled it with a troop, like a trooper, uh, had no problem spending it. We, we no, I, I, she, uh, is a good, good addition and I, um, Diane, if you want to unmute, you're more than happy. She comes with a wealth of experience, both in private business ownership and accounts payable, uh, lives in the city of Kalamazoo. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to her, but on behalf of the entire staff and myself, I mean, welcome aboard. Uh, we're really looking forward uh, to, to where we move this village. So Diane.
Thank you for the opportunity and I'm looking forward to the position. It's only been, it's been a couple of days and, uh, I felt very welcome. Thank you.
You, you can go ahead and let the council know, uh, your first formal meeting, how, how, how we handled that, uh, in the era of social distancing. Um, she got a, it was, we had to charge all the batteries on, on my plow truck.
Oh, yes.
I, I, I accomplished two things, uh, at one time. I said, welcome to the village and hop into this big international plow truck. We'll go for a drive.
Had a nice score, thank you. It was fun.
Yes.
Maybe I need to get a job with you. I haven't been in a truck.
I wasn't quite sure I was gonna be able to reach up into it, but it took a little jump.
I, I, I'm sure the village president can get a little favoritism, but most of us had to start on the open air quad in December, uh, before we got elevated up. So.
I never, I never seen Jim Mallory so excited was the day he got to snowplow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I owe it to Randy Skipper. It was the most memorable promotion I've had in, uh, in my professional career. So, um, all right, well, welcome aboard and we are really looking forward to. So we also on that note, I, uh, and then the governor extended some orders out of the health department today to December twentieth. Um, we did go ahead and, uh, purchase laptops both for the chief of police and Diane. They'll be set up this week hopefully to both be able to remote in. Um, so, and we are scheduled to have that reimbursed through a state of Michigan, uh, COVID grant. So no out of pocket in the long run to, to village taxpayers, but certainly get continuing to have um, the ability to work remote during these times and not miss a beat. So uh, other items, uh, we did a little bit on the GPS, um, Tom Hamm, uh, accurately, it is a pricey item. It's about thirty-five thousand dollars per uh, year as, uh, on a, on the golf cart. The golf carts that were out at Angels, their lease has expired. Uh, and so we have three quotes in hand from companies for golf carts and separate quotes for GPS units from each of those companies. Uh, where I, um, took the opportunity to submit a grant uh, to cover the cost of the GPS units. Uh, first and foremost is, is safety and maintenance to the golf course and, uh, anti-fraud deterrent. I, uh, play out at Angels quite a bit on my wife and I's membership that we pay for out there. And I know just the, the geographical having the clubhouse where it is. Uh, there are a lot more people playing additional holes of golf than they pay for uh, just due to that. And I think that will have a benefit. I think a unique thing that we're, are looking at is from my vantage point, Angels Crossing is the number one attraction to the village of Vicksburg from people outside of the four nine zero nine seven area code. So these GPS units give us the ability to not only traditionally, they would be used for advertisements or maybe a future golf outing type banner that shows up on the GPS unit. And it's about a six or eight inch screen in front of you between the two golfers. But we can highlight village events. We can highlight local village businesses. Uh, and our nonprofits, our parks, and as a, as the golfer enjoys their entertainment experience out at Angels over the course of, uh, four and a half to five hours, they would be exposed and we can set it up once a hole, once every three holes, a message, uh, from the village highlighting, uh, what we have, uh, in, in getting that word out in, in that manner. We would track, uh, somehow we could set up with local businesses. Either the mentioning of those ads to kind of track how many of those people are driven to other, uh, village paying businesses, which ultimately we would use that data hopefully in year four, I, I submitted for a three-year grant. We will learn in the future if that grants awarded or not. Uh, but we would use that data to substantiate if those advertises could offset some of that investment of that thirty-five thousand dollars. If the grant, uh, is not awarded, uh, we will reevaluate, uh, Tom and I and Michelle and look at, uh, it, um, which direction we go and present to the council. It's my anticipation, we will be presenting to the council on December twenty-first, our recommendation for the contract related to golf carts. It is my hope and desire that that will come with the recommendation of the GPS unit with financial assistance from the granting authority in that area. But, uh, I'll pause there for any questions on GPS units.
Yeah, trustee Wagner here.
Yes.
Uh, I just have to say that my experiences at golf courses using this technology has been outstanding. So I stand behind it. I think it's a worthwhile investment that if we can make it cost-effective, it will, like Tom and Jim have both said, add to the, uh, you know, that client experience out there.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from?
Hey Jim, yeah, Jim trustee Keller, or as far as the, the local, the local advertisements or the, the, uh, you know, announcing local events coming up, who's, who's going to be the caretaker of that? Is that going to be the village or is that going to be Angels Crossing or?
It, it would be a committee of, of did, did Julie just, ju- ju- just volunteer Alex?
Yeah, she did.
Hold in favor, say aye.
Okay. Alex, we've talked about this. You, you, you don't have to worry. You don't have to worry. I'll uh, they just lengthened the meeting by an hour for me articulating how busy you are right now on that Christmas card lane that Miss Coney so eloquently described in a positive manner.
Yeah.
The, no, it would be a committee. So we would want, because it, 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 you know, the golf type information, obviously, Angels, the village information would be coordinated, uh, through Alex and I. Um, and we would solicit other, other people, but if, if we're going in that direction, the positive is we have a few months to come up with the system of, of what gets on. I wrote the grant in a manner that, uh, in the years we were receiving financial assistance. Uh, those, and we defined it as a taxpaying entity of the village would not have to pay for that advertising. We would control the content and, and, and get that out. I think though heavily it'll be weighted for community events and, um, information like highlighting the rec park, the Frisbee Golf, the, the, the parks and rec system and also, uh, housing availability within the village, uh, giving our best to market the village and people move in.
Just curious.
And any other questions? All right, on, uh, twenty-second street, uh, we, um, are, the street has been paved. Um, it will, will, uh, look at striping it in the spring, but the final payment was able to be put down before the uh, asphalt plants closed. We did have a situation back in the field where, uh, the company accidentally struck a water uh, main pipe, uh, but I am confident, um, that that pipe is, will be, uh, put back in place to the specs that Randy Skipper's, uh, articulated to the company and could have already been completed. Um.
Yeah, I'm pointing to order. Did you do the update on the Kalamazoo sewer, Kalamazoo Street sewer issue?
No, I didn't hear it either.
I didn't hear it.
No, no, we're, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm gonna conclude with that one.
Okay.
Right before Alex, um, but I thought Rand, Randy's going to get in on the water main, that pipe that was struck, so.
That, that is on the schedule right now for a Wednesday fix. And the pipe burst will be Thursday. And they will tie that into Odell Farm Lane the first of next week is what I was told tonight.
So, um, more specifically, Mr. Wagner, so you're aware and, and we'll obviously be communicating through social media. Uh, we're looking at that road, uh, by the end of next week at the latest, being able to be opened up. And due to, I don't think it's going to have a finished grade on it due to the asphalt plants, but it certainly will be drivable. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes.
Any question on the 22nd Street?
Yeah. So that sewer tie-in is physically back into the plot?
Yes. Go ahead, Randy.
I'm sorry. It's, it's actually 100 approximately 150 feet back behind Ryan's property line. And that's where they will burst the line into Odell Farm Lane. And that's where a Y will be put in just prior to that manhole on Odell Farm. That will tie Ryan into that system.
The I like this because a retired cop has learned so much on the sewer system. That bursting of a line is the existing size line. The last 150 feet due to the proximity of the houses that that pipe is and the fact that it's 20 feet into the ground. They take the bigger size pipe and burst it through the smaller size one. And the, the one house to the south, it, it we are going to appropriately tie in that or to the west, tie in that house to the Y that he's talking about. So the bursted new sized, correctly sized pipe will go just short of the manhole. In the Y will be tying in that one house to the manhole. So the street has been blocked off where that new, where the manhole was dug up actually on that street, Mr. Frisbee.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah. Tim, if you would like a video, I can take my laptop out and show you what it looks like.
So.
24 hours a day, right?
Randy, how big a water line was broken and how many feet of it?
Eight inch water main, about four foot of it was damaged.
It's a blind.
The, the repair and all that is picked up by the company that, that hit it. So. And it's certainly not due to the lack of effort of Randy and his crew because they pointed it out multiple times before shovels hit the, hit the dirt, but those things happen. I will say, I know it's been an inconvenience. We've certainly had some feedback. But I'm pretty proud on a pretty complex improvement to a substantial section of the sewer system that it has kept on the timeline agenda that was created and so far within the amount allocated, the dollar amount allocated for it. And though some people, it's interesting. You, you do communicate even face to face with some people and, and then you find out on social media that wasn't articulated, but it is, it's a 75 to 80 year fix. So it's been certain inconvenience, but, but it'll be a long term solution for this village. So looking forward to that.
Hey Jim, it's Rick. One question. Is the goal then? Before everybody wraps up to have complete, everything completed except striping of 22nd. And then also I'm needing to put new tar, new, new road down on within the development. Is that it? Or is there going to be additional work next spring that we need to be done on this?
The only, and we will have a meeting with the engineers and Millbacher next week. I think it's scheduled on a punch ticket item list. As I sit right now, they felt in my last conversation with them last week, they felt that the sidewalk and walking lanes on 22nd Street, all the driveways would be in. I, I just had, they were work in progress. I haven't been out there to check. So I'm taking them at their word. That'll be done. So. Short answer is what you just said. If 22nd Street was straight before, it'll be restripped and the road out at Odell will be put back into a finished grade asphalt.
Can I step, step in on that real quick, Jim? The road has been striped and the sidewalk, and the sidewalk has been replaced.
There we go. They're true to their word. Great.
I may ask about the, the, I don't know what the technical term is it, but on the side of the road, travel the hard pack to stabilize the edges of the pavement. Is that, is that going to be done? Cause I just, I didn't see this rough dirt now. You know, turned over topsoil. So is it going to be edged or whatever you would refer to that as?
I will check on that, Tim, but I, I don't believe that prior to this, that it was. I think it was all top dirt up to the road, but I will verify that.
Okay. Thank you. It might be something we should do on our own because so many of those roads that aren't as like that, don't have the proper retaining. The edges and the corners of the pavement start to break down and deteriorate pretty quick. I saw that when they put that out there, redid it, but four or five years ago. The edges were falling in and caving away, but that's good. Thank you.
All right. And on Kalamazoo Street, we just to update everyone, since it's our first public meeting, last, last Thursday, we became aware of a sewer issue on Kalamazoo. That DPW jumped on rather quickly. The interesting thing again, the pipes on that roadway go back to the 1940s. There is the section for years or 2017 small section that, that where a pipe collapsed. We did repair work. Within that pipe, one of the leads coming from a house just simply sunk into the pipe, which caused the blockage. I think it's a testament to, to not only the team we have assembled in the village, but the relationships that we have entered in the last few years, specifically to Perceptive, where we about 15 months ago entered into a contractual relationship with them. Randy was able to get ahold of them Thursday and they have the underground camera equipment. So we could send that robot up. Ended up, I think 212 feet from the manhole, but we were able to see a clear video and still pictures of the problem. And Randy was able to it develop a plan for a solution based on that. Also, I think it's important and Randy has, you know, over the course of time, his actions speak louder than any words that can be spoken. His professionalism and treatment of individuals, whether it's citizens in this community or other business leaders is just second to none. And how valuable is that? So on a Thursday late afternoon, after the problem was be able to be identified, he contacted the owner of H and K Construction, Kip. And this was an extensive repair. It's 17 feet in the ground. There's a lot of regulations when you're going that deep and to, to one, have the equipment to do it and do it in a manner that, that would meet our standards. But more importantly, to be available 15 hours later so that we wouldn't have to use our vac truck multiple times through a weekend. And Randy was able to make that phone call. And first and foremost, I want to publicly acknowledge Kip and H and K for recognizing the emergency we had and coming to our rescue. And more importantly, not minimizing H and K a bit, but more importantly, I really want to recognize and thank Randy Skippers on this one specific incident. But I think it highlights what I get the pleasure of seeing on a daily basis. You know, the, the on a night that we, we, we talk about studies and programs and reports. A lot of times, and I have been a consultant, though the pieces of paper aren't able to articulate the intangibles and we got to live it here in the last week with what Randy was able to accomplish. So my hat's off to you, Randy. Thank you once again. I know you might not have, but I know once you developed the plan and told me that what was going to happen, I slept very soundly Thursday night. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be happy to answer any questions that a council member might have for me. And then after, if there, after that, I will turn it over to Alex Lee.
Hey Jim, it's Rick Holmes. Just one question. In trying to understand the kind of what happened there with the damage to to the damage on Kalamazoo Street, the sewer issue. So there is a collapse of a pipe that was coming from a private residence. I understand that. Is that unique or is that considering the age of our, you know, of our infrastructure and, and the homes in which we have is, I mean, is, could this be a common event? I'm just trying to.
Well, the, that Kalamazoo Avenue is listed as red in the SAW report as, as vulnerability to having issues like this. And it's highlighted back in 2017, we had a complete collapse of that section of pipe. Right now, so it does happen. Thankfully, not often. The village budgeted budgets for emergency situations in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, hoping they don't occur, but prepared if it does. But yeah, we're dealing with an aging infrastructure system. That these things happen.
Mind if I step in just for one quick second, Jim?
Sure, go ahead.
What we did, we dug that hole Friday because I was unsure of two homes, their risers coming into that main pipe. So I had to ensure in my own head that there was no damage and in the future that them homeowners would not have a problem. So we dug down 13 feet and we found both of those leads going into that main line and they were in solid condition. What had happened was when we had the original problem in 2017, we put it all back together and after three to almost four years, one of those risers just slid down like three to four inches. So it was catching everything that was going through that pipe that flows to the south. So instead of digging all the way down to that main, again, we knew the whole, them two homes were still hooked up and in good condition. So we went down and we, we vacuumed or jetted that line from the north to the south and opened that line back up, which it had been collecting all these rags and debris for the last three to four years. And we opened it back up. So instead of going all the way down, we saved a ton of money. We may have to vacuum or just jet that line once every three years until we can get that whole line replaced.
Thanks. Yeah, that makes a lot more sense because I was surprised. I went by four o'clock in the afternoon. It was all filled in and, and leveled out. And that was amazing how fast that got turned around.
But I assured, I assured myself that those two homes did not have any issues prior to going into that main. So I didn't see any reason to dig any deeper and, and cost us more money. When if I have to just run a jetter up that hose once every three years until we can get that whole main replaced, that's the decision I made.
Good for you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that with us, Randy. Appreciate that. Barring any other questions, we'll move on to Mr. Lee.
All right. We'll turn it over to Mr. Lee, who's led the, a team and a committee with Christmas in the village events. And so it's all yours, Alex.
Thank you, Jim. The executive summary on the Christmas card lane project is simply, it's open. I need to thank my Christmas in the village committee co-chairs Natasha Hanichin and John DeBolt for their coordinating efforts and outreach. We need to give a special thanks to the sign shop Kalamazoo for working with us on finding a sturdy alternative to that heavy plywood. And also to accommodate the less artistic among us. And also for donating a sign to thank frontline and essential personnel to be included in our Christmas card lane. A big thanks to Randy Skippers, our head of DPW and his crew for all of their efforts. At one point in the project, I was pushing the expenditure number very close to the donation totals. And that resulted in Mr. Mallory visiting my office with his very sharp pencil. It was Randy and the crew that engineered a solution that saved us more than $1,800. In addition to that, the whole crew was out to support us on Saturday morning. Help make sure that we were ready to go Saturday evening. We need to thank the historic society for their enthusiastic support and their great decorating. I don't recall the historic village ever looking more magical than it does this evening. We need to thank Bill Adams for his fundraising and you, the council for your support of tough decisions in very difficult times. And most of all, thanks to all the organizations and businesses that put cards in our lane this year. In addition to all of that, the downtown decorating is stunning. Natasha has been negotiating with Santa's people on visits to Vicksburg. Santa and Mrs. Claus visited Vicksburg for a couple of hours yesterday. And they dropped off a special North Pole mailbox in front of 107 Main Street. That means the children of Vicksburg can have their wish lists mailed through the North Pole's special express system. Turn ministers clause are very fond of Vicksburg. They have promised to return. We've had really kind response and good participation from our community. I'll be talking about our efforts Wednesday morning with Ken Lambfair on WKZO at 9:10. And in review, I'm quite proud of the work that we've been able to get done.
As we all are, Mr. Lee, thank you.
I know I, I took a trip through the Christmas card lane and it is absolutely magical, just like Alex said. So Alex, thank you and your crew for all the good work that you did. It's certainly making Christmas this year better than it would have been. So thank you.
Alex, I, I only have one request, and that is that you and Mr. Mallory on, on every other night, go out and, and sing carols down Christmas card lane. I think that would add.
No, no, you do not want to hear Mr. Mallory sing.
That song dance, that was bad.
Sorry about that, Jim.
That's all right. I'll be on FaceTime live after this.
You go get him.
Well, that's, we're, we're moving along very well. Thank you very much for all, all that. Citizens comments for non-agenda items. If there's anyone on that would like to speak to the council.
I, I do see Jackie's hand is raised.
Ah dang it. That's from the last time I'm, I'm, I'm on the phone and I think I'm screwing up. I don't, I don't mean to have my hand up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I got a question. Is the mill putting their lights on top of the mill this year? For Jackie?
Yes, we have turned on the, the old Christmas tree. It went up on Saturday night. And then we have our newer Christmas tree that was on the east wing last year is being moved to the west wing. So we'll have the old and the new tree on the west wing, but the old one should be already lit and up tonight. Like I think it started on Saturday.
Happy to see it. Good.
Looking, Mr. Frisbee, if Ms. Holmes or Mr. Callan or Colin have comments if they want to unmute themselves.
Jackie, it's Jenny. Joshua, thanks you for the Christmas lights.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
I, I do not see a hand raised from Mr. Callan or Colin and Jeff Ritz. Jeff, if, uh, Ritzma, if you have a question now you want to ask, or as always, I'll, Alex and I'll hang on after, uh, and that's a thumbs up. So back to you, uh, President Frisbee.
Think Callan's being just as quiet as he was when he was a trustee. Thank you, sir. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, uh, trustee's time. And, uh, I had a note here. Um, we'll start with trustee Holmes.
Nothing from me, Mr. Frisbee. Again, would just like to thank the Alex, the village, DPW and all involved, um, with the village this year. I know it wasn't an easy decision when council, um, unanimously agreed to not hold, um, the festivities that we normally do. But when I drove around yesterday with my family, it was very clear that that what we did this year was really well done. Um, and so thank you for my family. Um, it was, we really appreciate what the village has done. Looks great.
Trustee Keller.
Uh, first I'd like to wish or welcome the newest members to your first official meeting where you get to vote and get to do stuff. So, um, look forward to working with both of you, uh, in the coming years. And, uh, to the DPW and staff and Jim, I want to say thank you very much for everything you guys did last weekend. I know that end of last week, it potentially could have been a real problem. And, uh, I appreciate being kept, kept updated what was, what was happening. And, um, also the village looks awesome. Uh, the Christmas card lane, when I drive by early in the morning and, and later at night, it's, it's nice to see. It means a lot. So thank you very much, guys.
Trustee Merrill.
I'm, I'm just sorry I missed big, uh, the big send off for Bill. Um, I was out of town, but, uh, uh, it's good to know he'll still be around to consult with. And, uh, I guess that's about it.
Uh, did we lose Mr. Frisbee?
It appears so.
Well, I, I, I do want, um, I'm sure he's logging back on. I think he hit the wrong button. It's, it's happened to all of us, not usually memorialized for, uh, infancy on YouTube, but we'll, he'll jump back. One, one thing I did want to mention, um, who, and Alex can, can give the details. But I think specific to Christmas card lane, not only the ideas in that group and in the implementation, but the village, um, worked with the sign shop in Kalamazoo that developed those signs and the themes and the, uh, professionals. So I, uh, I know Troy and his crew down there, uh, really, really went top shelf for us, uh, at bottom basement, um, investment prices. So I wanted to make sure, thank them. And, uh, maybe you can, uh, list off the other people. I will get Mr. Frisbee back on the line.
I have a question for Alex. Alex, who designed, uh, the village council sign? Because I thought it was excellent.
Um, we gave some ideas to the sign shop, uh, and they sent us a couple of proofs. And so I'll, I'll really give most of the credit to the, uh, the sign shop on that.
That was, it's fantastic. I was just so pleased to see it.
I agree.
All right. I am, uh, though I, the person who said I can't sing, um, I did take the time here to get him on the phone. So Mr. Frisbee is on the phone, um, and the floor is back to yours. And just a thumbs up from people, uh, that you can hear him.
Thank you very much. I, uh, everything just shut down right in the middle, mid-sentence of all this. So I think all the trustees have had their opportunity to speak.
They're all shaking. Oh, no, someone's, someone, did Mr. Olson have an opportunity? I think we need to get.
Okay. So we left it off on Julie. So yeah, trustee Olson.
Um, I want to bring up the fact that today's the seventy-fifth anniversary of Pearl Harbor. I think it's an important day in history, most definitely. Um, so Tim, Wednesday night is the fireboard meeting. I plan on zooming in on that, representing the village unless you say no. I, I know appointments to committees haven't been done yet, but that meeting is coming up. Uh, I learned through that. What'd you say?
We can talk, we can talk tomorrow about that, Danny, for sure.
Okay. Yeah. All right. I learned too that Don Als will be representing South, uh, Schoolcraft Township. Um, Randy and the guys, Alex, kudos on everything in the village. Can't give you guys enough praise. Um, I see that John Gessler's still on. John, I'm planning on Monday morning breakfast with you in Kalamazoo with the guys. And I see also that Scott Anderson's on. I want to contact Scott, um, get together after the first of the year. It's been a lot of talk about Neighborhood Watch coming into Vicksburg and especially to the north and south. They've been having lots of problems. Um, I want to bang heads with Sheriff Fuller on that too. So that's something I think that the village needs to take a serious look at. So, um, only other thing, golf course, everything's great. Uh, I want to interject, I think at some point, if we're going to keep going with this, we need to take a look at putting in a tournament. Uh, Baton Harbor and, uh, Battle Creek both have tournaments. They have major uh, Donner's, Whirlpool Corporation and Firekeepers Casino. I, we don't have one yet, but I think it's a mill-run golf course turnout would be something to consider. So just interjecting that, but thank you.
Trustee Reacher.
I've said my piece. Thank you.
Trustee Wagner.
Thank you, President Frisbee. Uh, just wanted to say welcome again to Diane. Uh, glad to have you on the team. Looking forward to that. Um, Jim, I want to schedule my ride along in the international. Uh, so I'll get with you and Randy on that. Hopefully our first snow will, you know, suit up, but, uh, uh, great job on Christmas card lane. It looks awesome. And not speaking on behalf of the Historical Society, but it's a great project to work on. And, uh, I'm really glad that all the groups got together to make that happen. I think it's a wonderful thing for the village. Um, and that's all I've got for today.
If I can, uh, President Frisbee, I just had one point on the, I wanted the council to be aware of. Uh, we did notify the historic, Historical Society that the village would be picking up the utility bills for the month of December with, because we asked for the, I think it's a good addition that the buildings, uh, turn on their interior lights and hopefully people get curious enough to come back and and participate in, in that offering as well. So thank you for that. Back to you, uh, President Frisbee.
Yeah, no, that's very good forward thinking, Jim. And that was, that was, I think everybody can, uh, agree with that. Yeah, I just, I made some assumptions that this job was gonna be a little bit easier than I thought, but as you all know, some of us have smoked within the last couple of weeks and some haven't. So I just want to reinforce right now, the committee, the committees that are available. So if you all can hear me, we got the, uh, South County Fire Authority, the sewer and water. Yeah, President Pro Tem, got the financial, human resources, the planning commission, Parks and Rec, Kalamazoo area transport, the cats. And we have a municipal building group that I think we need to really dig into a little bit more. Uh, and the Kalamazoo bike and the district library. So my email address is tfrisbee, B I E, at, at, uh, vicksburgmi.org. So I would ask each of you to consider those, what really excites you? What background do you have in that? And I think it's easier for you just to reach out to me here in the next few days, uh, by Friday, if we could. Now tell me what you really have interest is and what you can bring to the table. So then we, then we can go from there. We, I said, I've, I've had conversations on the computer that just, uh, I just ran out of time and, uh, really it, it revolves around your desire and what you want to do. So uh, please all reach out to me as soon as you can on that. With, um, what else I want to say? How about the vac truck? And, uh, yeah, that thing's paid for us up a couple of times here in these, uh, since we bought that. So thank you for the, the Villa, uh, Vicksburg Foundation and the council for approving that, getting that going. And what else was it? I, I would ask Mr. Mallory at this time and the staff, if you would please for us to evaluate, put together, um, a compensation package, um, you know, revolving around, uh, personal time off, the PTO, uh, the health, um, insurance cost sharing and the entry level top pay structure. Give us a feel for where we, where you feel we need to be, uh, within the community to maintain the, the staffs that we have uh, and to grow even better. So that's all I had uh, on my docket for the evening. If anyone else has any other questions, if that will adjourn this meeting.
Looking, I see a bunch of no hand, oh, Rick, Rick just had a hand go up.
Just waving.
Oh, that's a wave. I guess it's a wave goodbye, not a wave can I talk.
Okay.
During the meeting and thank you all for, uh, attending and being part of this.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone.
Good job, Tim.
Thanks, everybody.
Alex, should I sing Frosty the Snowman or something?
How come I can't get out of here?
Yeah, I'm not taking a run for that, Jim.
I can't close it off. Why can't I close it out?
I think you should sing the twelve days of Christmas, Jim. Let's.
I'm not singing. You, you've been present for those days too. So.
We've already been warned.